Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call the regular meeting of Wallingford Inland and Westland Water Course Commission's to order. The date is Wednesday, July 17, 2019, and the time is 7:00. If you would please join me in a pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we're going to a roll call. Robert Simonoff.
Deborah Phillips.
Jim Bydally.
Nick Kern.
Alan McKee.
David Kern.
Erin O'Hare, environmental planner.
Okay, moving on. Consideration of the minutes of the regular meeting, June 5, 2019. Any comments regarding the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting of June 5, 2019 be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? A call for a vote. Dave?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Jim? Yes. Going on to old business. Application A-19-6.112 Greed Trail and Spring Lake Dock Installation.
Hello.
How are you?
Good. Happy to hear.
Okay, Erin, what's the latest?
Latest? Well, you got the application went out a while ago because this was received at the gym meeting. So I'm gonna pass her. And that had drawings that had a cross-section of the construction of this sort of a dock slash deck or something. The applicant is the builder, and I'm gonna pass around kind of what it looks like and the lot, the picture of the lot on the lake. This is on the Spring Lake. And this is kind of give you an idea of kind of sort of that development. And then tonight, I, this week, I got comments from the water division. They were concerned about erosion control, but they didn't understand that that's really not an issue, which I'm gonna let the owner describe why it's not an issue. Your environmental planner report went out on Thursday night in the packet. And the dock structure, we'll call it a dock structure, is 16 by 8, 16 feet long, 8 feet wide.
Okay, but what impact is it having on the wetlands?
Really, there's no wetlands per se. Maybe a skinny ribbon of 2 feet or so along there. It's really the lake.
It's just sitting in the like couple of feet?
Yes.
Couple of thighs of sitting in the lake.
The piers are not driven in the lake bed. The piers sit in these tubs full of concrete, four tubs full of concrete. So there's no drilling in the lake bed or anything like that. And then there's a footing structure on the land, which I'm sure Karen can describe better than I can.
This is your regular sonnet tube?
Well, you have to get your knee for the rubber.
Sorry. My name is Karen Mikus. I live at, own the house at 12 Greed Trail, Wallingford. The footings in the ground are just your regular old standard sonnet tubes. I dug 3 and 1/2 feet, filled them up, put a footing in there, 4x4 post.
Crusaders, any questions? Debbie?
Yes.
Robert?
Do we have jurisdiction in the lake?
Oh, yeah. It's a water body, you know, like a pond.
Okay. Last question after the depth. What's the depth would be off the end of the top line?
It kind of graduates off. To the best of my knowledge, it's 6-plus feet at the very end of where the dock will be, and it's about 4 and 1/2 feet right in front of where...
Water meet?
Yeah.
Is it seasonal or it's gonna be your permanent?
Permanent. There's no tide, there's no current.
I'm just worried about the ice in the wintertime. It's gonna freeze up and split everything, but I'm not worried about that.
I'm not worried about it.
Okay. I'm good.
Cross that bridge, I guess.
Ally?
No questions.
Dave?
No.
Then at this time, I'll entertain a motion of the significance of this activity.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, application A-19-6.112 Greed Trail and Spring Lake Dock installation be deemed to be not a significant activity.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, call for a vote. Dave?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Yes. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny this application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, application A-19-6.112 Greed Trail and Spring Lake Dock installation be approved.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If no discussion, call for a vote. Dave?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, going on to application A-19-6.24 miles drive.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Kevin Crusaden. I'm the attorney for the applicant.
Can you spell your last name, sir?
Sure.
D-E-N?
Yes.
Okay.
My office is at 3 Lafayette Street in Milford. With me tonight is Jeff Gordon of Codis Booty and Associates, Bob Weeway, the engineer on the project, also from Codis Booty and Associates, and the applicant's Mr. Shalech Patel and Mr. Vinay Patel, who have a few hotels in the Connecticut area and the rest of the country. Typically, as an attorney, I don't get involved with the wetlands applications. I did want to make the commission aware of something and ask if at all possible that a vote could be made tonight. The reason for that is we are on a contract deadline that expires at the end of this month. And unless there's, if there's some way to vote on the application with any minor issues that can be satisfied as conditions of a permit, then we would really appreciate that. For whatever reason, we've, it's, the seller has been reluctant to grant us extensions of time on the contract. We had to go for ZBA variance, which is none of your concern, but it did delay us. And I just wanted to make the commission aware that we have that issue that's looming over this, over us.
Well, let me ask you this, that you need planning zoning approval?
We need site plan approval, correct.
Site plan approval?
Yeah, yeah, planning and zoning site.
But you won't have that until into August?
Right, but that's, we're confident that since we have the variance, that we'll meet all of those...
But you have, you're talking about needing a contract by the end of the month. Your contract expires the end of this month.
Right. However, my clients are comfortable, if they have wetlands approval, that they could move forward without the, potentially without the, any zoning contingency. I spoke with the seller's attorney today. He's actually an attorney out of New Hampshire. And he grilled us for what was gonna happen tonight, why were we going to wetlands, so on and so forth, even though we've explained this to him on several different occasions. And he wanted a report first thing in the morning about what happened today. So they haven't agreed to an extension yet. I'm hoping that if we get approval, that they'll agree to an extension for the site plan, but that's, that's not guaranteed. Every, we got one extension, and it was hard fought, and it expires at the end of this month. So I just wanted to make the commission aware of that. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Sorry if I present from up there.
You have to be. We're in a little different situation. This is not our normal presenting room.
But you'll wind up with more comfortable chairs soon.
No, not us. You guys will.
This is true. This is true. We appreciate that. My name is Jeffrey Gordon. I am a environmental planner, landscape architect, licensed here in the state of Connecticut, and I am a principal with Codis Booty and Associates. We are engineers and planners doing business at 263 Boston Post Road in Orange, Connecticut. And we are representing the contract purchasers of this property. But the history of the property is kind of unique because this parcel was approved as part of a subdivision back in the early 1980s. And back in that time, the zoning district was a CB-12 district, which was a 12,000 square foot with very small setback areas and things of that nature, I think a 12 and 40-foot setbacks. In the interim, the, with a lot of the development that took place, Bristol Myers Squibb, all the interchange work, they changed to the I-5 district was introduced, which is a 5-acre district with much more pronounced setbacks, front yard 100 feet, side yard 50 feet, rear yard 50 feet, and other different requirements. This parcel is a 4.35 acre parcel. It is a rear lot, and maybe a little history. This was originally, this whole subdivision was developed by Souch Chalet. You kind of see the lots here. We have right now, you got a daycare, you have the Fairfield Inn. Over here, you have the Homewood Suites, and then it was an office building approved here. And what I'm showing over here is more of a blow-up of the front part of the land. And the reason I'm showing you that is because we have running adjacent to us, there is a water course, and there's a major town sewer easement that goes right along our property line between us and that water course, which is entirely on the state of Connecticut, I-91 corridor property. That water course, as you can see by how beautifully parallel all the contours are, was man-created when the, when the off-ramp was built and the subdivision was left over. It picks up all the drainage on Barnes Road, it picks up drainage north of Barnes Road, and there are numerous areas discharging off of the ramp that go into it as well. Also, we have the Chalet Drive, which was then accepted by the town as Miles Drive, and the drainage for that comes down. This cul-de-sac eventually was converted to a through road when the Homewood Suites was constructed, and it goes back down around to, I guess, Leeches or around that area through there. And then all this drainage comes down, goes through this accessway to a detention basin located, as I show here, which is south of the Fairfield Inn building, but it is on the Fairfield Inn property. So that detention basin picks up all this road, it picks up the drainage for the kinder care, picks up the drainage for the Fairfield Inn, goes into that pond, it discharges. This is north of our subject site. We will not be draining into that at all.
Has that pond been maintained?
I would say not. There is question as to whose responsibility. According to survey maps prepared by H.E. Cole, and I had a little discussion with Rob Altremidas about it, it said that when added drainage was put into it, that the town would take over responsibility for maintenance. I would probably guess, since that Fairfield Inn was purchased and renovated from Souch Chalet, they probably don't even know what's on their property. But whoever's responsibility it is, it's either Fairfield Inn or the town of Wallingford. It's, that got really nothing to do with this property. But again, we have an accessway here because it is a flag lot. That's what you deal with here. So you can see here the odd shape of the parcel. It's a 40-some odd foot change in elevation from this corner of the parcel to that corner of the parcel. So it is pretty extensive. There was a lot of debate, consternation, and back and forth as to what standards would be applied to this parcel, the CB-12 standards or the I-5 standards. There's case law that says you go by, if you've ever developed a parcel, then whatever the thing was approved under, you would do that. But town council felt that it would be cleaner if we got variances, so it would be all handled under the current zone, and going forward, everybody would be happy with that. So that was why we had to go to the zoning board of appeals. That really set us back about, you know, eight, nine months while waiting for legal opinions and whatnot. And then Casey's illness set us back in time-wise while we're waiting for her to recuperate. So you got the back of the Homewood Suites over here, you have the Fairfield Inn over here, and you have the ramp shown over here. And all this water here discharges into this pond, which discharges into this drainage way. And then you have a number of catch basins along the ramp that discharge directly into that as well. And then you have all the drainage that I showed you before of the Barnes Road and a 36-inch pipe under Barnes Road that discharge and feed this way here. So the wetlands were flagged by Scott Stevens, and until he realized he was on, not on our property, you know, he, kind of, they're kind of tenuous about trespassing on state property, but he located some flags, and then we got a location roughly of the wetland system. And, and the question, whether that is an intermittent water course or a perennial water course, whatever it is, it's still, it's off of our property. And we still have regulated area because of how it is situated. Now, what we have highlighted, doesn't show up well over here, but it shows up a lot better if I do that. This pink line here is the offset of the Upland Review Area, off of that off-site wetlands area. And as such, we have 21,810 square feet on our site of Upland Review Area. So that was something that was highlighted.
Can I just interrupt you a moment?
Yes, sir.
Put your, put your pink map up there again. Where approximately is the sign that says Wallingford is great, make Wallingford great again, I think that's what the sign says, on there that you see from 91?
I don't know.
It's down further.
Down from 91.
It's not, it's not on your property?
No.
It's on the adjacent property, really?
The adjacent, this is all wooded. The adjacent property has bits of it that are open field, so that would probably make no sense, I couldn't tell you precisely. So again, the parcel that we have here is 4.35 acres. The amount of regulated Upland Review Area that is within our site is 21,800 square feet, so roughly half an acre. So what we're looking to do here is, there's the access drive coming through here. This parcel owns half of it, and has an easement on the other half of it. And that parcel owns half of it and has an easement on our half of it. And then there's a drainage easement, utility easement to the town of Wallingford that goes through this to the big sewer line here. You can see the sewer easement comes down, and also the drainage easement that the town retains. Okay. So our proposal is a four-story Hampton Inn and Suites hotel, 105 rooms. We have the minimum required parking spaces for the town, and what the town staff had asked us to do was to do the absolute bare minimum, but show where we could expand if we chose to, so as to reduce the amount of impervious areas and to do that. So we were willing to do that, and Hilton apparently is willing to live with that because we have many masters, and Hilton reviews everything too. So again, we have the parking on both sides of the building, and we have a stormwater management system. And we have been back and forth with Mr. Altremidas and with Mr. Kruger. And we also met with Ms. O'Hare and missed hand on this over the last year or so. I'm going on quite a bit. I will leave the drainage discussion for Mr. Weeway of our office. He'll tell you what has gone on with him and Mr. Kruger and his responses to the sand filtration requirements for the watershed protection that is part of the application. Mindful that while we'll provide what's required under the current statute, none of the sub-contributing water, that all predated all those standards. Even this retention pond predated your normal standards. This predated, I'm gonna guess, your commission, because I think it was approved like '82. So what we're building now meets current standards. What's existing is before our time and before the...
Where did your site drain to before this project?
It all just goes right across into that drainage way.
Sheet flow?
Sheet flow. A little concentration here or there, but mostly sheet flow. I'll let Bob go into the sand filtration system. The sand filtration system that's been discussed is outside the Upland Review Area as well. It's upgrading to that. The primary activity that's in the Upland Review Area is the grading that's taking place in the fill slope for the parking lot. We have cut on the, on the west side of the property and some fill on the east side of the property, so we have a little bit there. And we had to tighten up the slope, working with Mr. Altremidas as to having some of the riprap slope in certain areas to satisfy the sewer division's request that we not have any fill go into the easement. Now, what is kind of interesting is, if I go back to what was actually approved on the site a number of years ago, this office building, more impervious area, well, I'm just saying because it was approved, but back then, they, they worked over that sewer easement.
That's a whole different life. That's a lifetime ago. Let me ask you this, is the, the, your re-grading in the Upland Review Area, have you got any impervious surface in the Upland Review Area?
No, the only thing that you might qualify would be some of the riprap.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about that.
No.
Just about blacktop.
No. Basically, we leave, we're staying out of the easement completely. All the fill and everything is, is on the uphill side of the easement, nothing going across. The only thing that goes across is on the southeast corner of the property, the drainage discharge for the ponds. Mr. Kruger has a detail he wants us to use with the concrete planking over his sanitary easement, so if they drive trucks over there, this pipe is fully protected and the drainage will penetrate through there. So he's given us some direction on that. Again, I'll let Bob address that. S and E measures, we have, the project would be built right straight through, but we did break down some phasing as far as the rough grading aspects of it, to make sure that we have certain sediment basin areas that interim use. We can do that, but we don't want to do it in an area with this biofiltration, because if I catch any sedimentous scenario, it impacts the infiltration. There is extensive landscaping that is proposed around the detention basin. We have plant materials and grasses that are in harmony with, with that area. We have certain pond plantings along the bottom and bases of pond there, so this will become a regulated area once that is, is constructed. And then we have slope protection that we are demonstrating here with red twig dogwood, with various cotony aster spice bush, things of that nature, forsythia and things along So basically, we are as concentrated as we can be. We've minimized the amount of impervious. We've pulled any kind of impervious area outside the review area. We've minimized slopes by working with staff where we have riprap slopes in certain areas and guardrails and things of that nature to make sure it's a secure site. So at this point, I'd, if you don't have any questions, I would let Mr. Weeway talk to you.
Is he gonna discuss the retention pond in more detail?
Yeah, oh, yes.
My name's Robert Weeway.
Sir, can you spell your last name?
W-H-E-W-A-Y. And I'm a licensed engineer and principal at the firm of Codis Booty and Associates located at 263 Boston Post Road in Orange, Connecticut. Basically, what I'd just like to do is walk you through some of the drainage, and we'll get into it with more detail with the detention basin. As the existing conditions plan shows, right now, there's virtually no impervious coverage on the site, with the exception of the access drive for the Fairfield Inn up to the north end of the property. The topography is set up such that this property line basically forms a ridge line, such that all the drainage is basically self-contained on our site, so anything to the west of the property line falls back on the Homewood Suite sites. Anything to the east of this property line would flow in an easterly direction towards that drainage ditch for I-91. Given the topography and the land cover that's out there, the runoff in the site is primarily sheet flow, as Mr. Gordon may have referenced before. And you can see that basically takes it in an easterly, southeastally direction off the site and into the drainage ditch for I-91. And the drainage patterns that we're gonna have for the proposed are, in essence, because of the requirement to provide treatment for the stormwater runoff from the site. We basically had to take and collect the stormwater runoff from the developed portion of the site, treat it, store it, and then ultimately release it back onto the property and ultimately off the site. So what you can see up and through here, that we're gonna be collecting all the runoff from the paved impervious surfaces and everything from the westerly portion of the watershed, providing a couple of different types and levels of treatment for the stormwater management. For the roof areas, we've, we've provided for separate infiltration galleries, which will only receive the runoff from the tributary roof area. So for the main portion of the roof, we do have a foundry ground gallery system in through here, which is, which will be consisting of 28 units of concrete galleries. The storage system's been sized to contain the first mention runoff from the tributary roof area, so, which is commonly referred to as the water quality volume. So that volume will be fully contained in the system before any overflow or takes place out of the system. For less frequent storm events, say the two-year, 10, 10-year, and so on, the system is set up that there will be overflow out of the gallery system and then ultimately coming down and discharging into the detention basin, which is generally in this area here. So that provides a level of treatment for, for the roof area. For the remainder of the parking area, everything is basically gonna be collected from the north end of the property. There's approximately 20-foot change in grade overall from the site, so from this area up here, everything's gonna be collected through the pavement system. We've got a number of catch basins and off of the original design plans. And off of the original design plans, this is a little blow of detail, so it's a little bit better. So what you can see is we had a couple of catch basins here that were collecting the water from the proposed parking area, directing it up into this area here where we had a water quality control structure, which was a V2-V1, which basically provided pretreatment prior to going into the detention basin. And the primary purpose of that is provide for removal of cemented solids and floatables from stormwater runoff from the proposed parking areas. This unit was sized to treat up to the 100-year storm event in terms of flow rates. So for up to the 100-year storm, the overall efficiency is in excess of 80% TSS removal, which is in accordance with the deep water quality standards as they presently exist. So the flow that came out of the water quality control structure was then being directed to the detention basin. Now, on the design that submitted with the applications, part of your plans, this was a two-compartment facility whereby we had a bio-retention basin basically up in the north end and then the remainder of the basin, for lack of a better term, is a more conventional type detention basin for storing the storm events. So the bio-retention, the purpose of the bio-retention basin again was very similar to what we were doing with the galleries, was to basically provide the storage volume for that first inch of runoff from this area here. So we're providing two levels of treatment. We're providing removal of TSS and also the floatables from here. And then within the bio-retention cell, we were providing for the retention of that first inch of runoff and providing for infiltration to help provide for groundwater recharging through that area. Again, for the storm events that were in excess of the water quality volume, then the remainder of this facility would operate very similar to detention basin, would fill up and be metered out through an outlet control structure through here. So you know, for the 100-year storm event, the water would fill up and basically fill fill the basin up to the design capacity and be slowly metered out through that outlet control structure over a period of time. And then the discharge, as Mr. Gordon pointed out, we had that coming down through here. We were discharging out through a flood end section and basically creating a riprap channel between our discharge point and the property line. Now, in between that, we do have the sanitary sewer easement to the town of Wallingford. And on the original design submission, we had basically like a riprap path that went down through there. Through the conversation with Mr. Kruger, and I believe it's in his subcomments that were submitted to the commission, we are going to be substituting this for something that is more drivable for the store department. So if they do need to have access to the sanitary sewer line, both on our property as well as off-site, that we're able to traverse that without much of an issue with being able to get equipment back and forth. So right now, there are no details on the drawing for that, but they're pretty standard or kind of what's referred to as cable tie concrete, where basically they're pre-formed concrete blocks that are all tied together with a cable. And in essence, they form a mat-type system that they can be put down with a machine in that area and just laid down and it gives you basically H20 loading over that system to allow for vehicle maneuvering and tracking through there. Now, with respect to Mr. Kruger's comments, which we've had several meetings with him and his comments were issued to us last week, and basically, I guess it's his July 15 letter, we did have a chance to go through that and we did have conversations with Mr. Kruger. And we really don't have any issues with being able to comply with all the conditions that are in his letter. The one comment that I would make though is that on page three of his comments, which I think is comment number two with regards to storage containers, he was asking basically if there were storage containers on there, then they would have to comply with the zoning regulations. Based on the site plans that we have, just for a point of reference for the commission, there are no storage containers being proposed as part of this project. So with regards to the comments with Mr. Kruger, again, the original design that was here is primarily based on current state-of-the-art technologies in terms of the bio-retention basins, the water quality structures with the V2-V1. They are, you know, state-of-the-art, they're recognized by both Connecticut Deep as well as the U.S. EPA in terms of best management practices. Now, in conversations with Eric, I guess it's, for lack of a better term, it's kind of old school with regards to what they have for their requirements in terms of the watershed protection. Basically, it gets rid of this and this and substitutes out a more conventional type oil water separator, which really has no scientific basis for it or anything along those lines. And likewise with the bio-retention basin, while this has, in my opinion, has many more benefits than the sand filter, this is not acceptable to Mr. Kruger. So we were able to basically take his comments into consideration and get back into a more conventional type design whereby we would be eliminating the bio-retention basin up here and substituting that with a sand filter, which would be located just to the east of the detention basin. So at the end of the day, I mean, we're providing the same type of treatment, comparable levels of reductions in peak rates of runoff, comparable levels of groundwater recharge for the two systems, albeit they are, they will be different in the calculations just because of the different sizing criteria. But the end result is that we're going to be able to provide the zero increase in runoff between pre-developed and post-developed conditions for all storms that were analyzed up to the 100-year. The only negative to the sand filter in this particular area is that it is taking up additional land area, whereas before, everything was incorporated into one basin. Now we have the extra feature, again, which is located just off to the east of the basin. But by way of reference, everything that we're doing here is still outside of your upland review area, which is detected right here by the red dash line. So this is still probably a good 40 feet away or outside of that review area. So I think that's a pretty quick velocity overview of what the stormwater management system is and what we're attempting to achieve with the development. So if there's any commissions or questions that the commission might have, I'll certainly try and answer them for you.
Okay. Rob?
No, sir.
Do you have a question?
You said it's about a 40-foot elevation difference?
It was about a 20-foot change in grade, basically from the high point up here, because we have a high point of the site would be located approximately here, low point on the site is down at the southeast corner. So you're about elevation 310 at the southwest corner and you're about 350 up here. So it is a 40-foot change. I think the reference that I was making to was with respect to the proposed.
Is there going to be a change in the TOFA then, post-construction you'll have?
Right, because the site is going to have to be flatter because again, there's certain requirements with accessibility. We don't want the driveways too steep for vehicles. You've got to make sure the parking is fairly flat for people to get in and out. So I think what Mr. Gordon pointed out, that's why we have a cut situation up here and a fill situation down here. So that's in part to try to level off that 40-foot change in grade so that we're not as significant. So for what we're working with now, by way of reference, we're at about elevation 348 up at this point and then down at the low point of the paved area, we're down about 331. So we've knocked that down to about a 17-foot change in grade from the north axis down to the southeast corner of the pavement.
So as far as on the site, fill removed, fill stay, everything's going to stay? Are you going to bring fill in? Or is this going to be developed?
Pretty close to abounds, but you have to bring...
You guys, at least make reference to your name.
Jeff Gordon. You have to bring in base material for under the parking lot. You have to import some material for underneath the slab and whatnot. And then when you see how much topsoil comes off the site, it's very hard to see what kind of balance there'll be, but on raw grades, it's pretty close, but there will be some stuff coming off and some stuff coming in because of the type of material that you need and the type of material you don't need. Topsoil comes out, stone base comes in.
So what's your approximate removal coming off the site? 1,000 yards, 10,000 yards? You must have some kind of calculation already because you're taking the topsoil away, bringing across the stone in to do your parking lot. Are we talking 20,000 yards?
No, it wouldn't be anything of that nature, you know, probably in about the 3,500-yard range ballpark.
Okay.
Again, the depth of topsoil tells you a lot. I mean, I have an old agricultural site, you know, we have areas where there might be four inches of topsoil, there might be other areas where there's 15 inches of topsoil. So that's going to...
He's probably got about a foot in that area.
Well, you know better than I would.
Where's your snow shelf? Most of...
I make a lot of use of hydrangeas and decorative grasses because in the wintertime, we can dump snow on those things and it's not an issue. We show snow shelves around the perimeter here. We have an island over here that we can put snow in there. And then we have this large area along the edge of the basin there where we can, we actually call out snow shelf areas. Snow shelf, we pull the plants back from the curb lines a bit. We don't plant right up there. We have probably about a seven, eight-foot separation off the curb line. So we have snow shelves around most of the perimeters of the site.
So there's no defined snow shelving on the project?
Actually, on the landscape plan, I have areas labeled as snow shelves.
Okay. These sand filters and the way you changed the original was here before, who's going to maintain that? How are they going to maintain? Do you have a yearly maintenance product?
Yeah, it's part of the application package in the detailed drainage report, which is a little 200-page, there is an eight-page document in there for operation names when we're also in our management plan. That will have to be amended to take into account for the sand filter. That's going to be with the owner.
The owner?
Correct.
Anthem and will be...
Yes.
Dave?
Dave?
Yep, tomorrow.
Do you have any questions?
No. I have a couple of questions. On this retention pond, now the first one we drawn up, which got me a little bit confused a little bit, this is a wet bottom pond?
No.
It's not a wet bottom?
Dry bottom.
Dry bottom pond, but you've got plantings in the dry bottom pond?
Correct, because that was primarily up and through here. This being set up, it was set up originally as a bio-retention basin.
Okay. Hang right here. Stop right there. So you have this bio-retention basin, which does not get mowed?
Generally, it would get cut down twice a year probably.
Okay, so that would be in part of the maintenance. And your concept behind that was the first flush of the driveway was going to sit in that little bit lower area? Elevation-wise, a little...
Yeah, generally speaking, I think you probably need to take a look at the detail sheet for the bio-retention basin because that'll give you, I think, the insight as to all the details for it, which is on SP 10 of the application.
That's okay.
Yeah, so we've got, you know, so again, this provides a little bit more detail on what we had originally proposed. So again, the hatched area in through here is what's referred to as that bio-retention component. So on the cross-section view, it's basically a layer that's in there anywhere from 24 to 30 inches deep, made up of a very specific type of soil mix. It's a filter media mix, there's a very specific gradation on all that. And again, the primary purpose of that was for biological uptake, supporting the plants that are in there and providing additional levels of water treatment for the more frequent type storm events.
But low-volume storm events?
Well, for that component, but I think I know where you're going with this. This would be flooded during less frequent storm events. So if you had a 10-year event that came through for that period of time, this would be underwater, yes.
And if that high-volume water came in, you would have a real flush off the driveway, which is theoretically the high contaminant water?
No, the high contaminant is tied up in that first inch of rainfall. When you get anything above a two-year, your pollutant concentration is actually lower in that runoff.
Except you have a higher volume of water in the pond and that first flush is going to be sitting on top of the water on the whole flood of the pond. It's not going to stay on the bottom. The biofilter isn't going to process the contaminants off the first flush because your high volume of water is going to bring you up so high, it's going to flush it to the next...
No, I think I would disagree with you a little bit because again, when the water comes off through here, when it gets into this, it's really not sitting on top of that. It's infiltrating into this cross-section because again, if you take a look at it, if you think that the bio-retention mix is, you know, just by way of example, the bio-retention mix is about this deep. So what happens is that it's a very chorus-type mix, so there's a pretty big volume storage that takes place in this. So that first inch is typically filtering right into that bio-retention medium mix.
And filtering where too?
It's filtering within itself and then being allowed to exfiltrate out through the bottom of the ground here. Yeah, because we've done, we've done a number of tests up there for the infiltration and permeability. And the test results show that we do have a fairly high rate of exfiltration that can take place out of the basin.
Well, a couple of things. What we discovered on that general territory of land, especially where Anthem is now, the first foot to two feet was a solid, heavy clay, very, very non-porous material. And the minute you broke through this two-foot layer, there was nothing but gravel and water just took off. I mean, it just flowed. I was shocked to see it because normally the fields had standing water on them. So you may find that same condition on this side. So, but getting back to this whole thing, there's always been this conversation, is that first flush is the higher contaminant flush. And originally, before this commission really got started, they wanted the first flush in the ground. And we stated, said, well, wait a minute, we didn't want the first flush in the ground. That's the highest contaminant. And that's pretty much where they, we pushed them into the sand filter concept because that's where the water should go. It should be going through more like a sand filter. Now, your biofilter is claiming to do the same job, but I think that, and fortunately, the cars today are not the highly contaminated oil dripping cars that were of yesterday. You can see that because the parking lots are not covered with oil spots and so on. So that's a good thing. But at least if you come out of your biofilter or if you come in with the next compartment and have the sand filter, I'm not sure why you need the sand filter in a whole nother retention area. I mean, we always, on the other sites around the property had, or the property, but the zone, the sand filter was at the outlet structures where the sand filter was. But if Mr. Kruger wants a whole nother structure to protect his water supply, his drinking water supply, I'm not going to question that. But one other thing that I would question is you're bringing your discharge pipe from your retention area and bringing it into the swale at a 90-degree angle. And I don't think that's the best route to go. That end, the flare end should be at 45. It should be turning itself and flowing with the swale rather than coming in at right angles because you're going from a sheet flow system into a single-point discharge.
Right, okay, but we don't have the ability, because again, this whole thing is set up based on the topography. So the topography, you know, the water's, you're going to flow at a 90-degree angle to the topography. So if you look at what the topography is doing, we're pretty much parallel right here.
I miss the fact that you're not going all the way to the retention, to the swale.
Right, and that brings up a very good point. The swale is actually way off of our site. So the only thing we could do is carry it up to our property line. And the fact that this swale's been designed, the swale's been designed to accommodate the 100-year flow rate. So that will minimize any potential for the erosion. the 100-meter flow rate, so that will minimize the, any potential for the erosion that comes off, that comes off and through that area. So again, everything that gets in through here, it's gonna get, and again, the topography starts to hook a little bit, so on its own, it may start to bend a little bit before it gets into that swell. Because again, the water's gonna flow 90 degrees to the control line.
We have some other parking lots that are falling out and they're at 90 degrees and you can see the difference, you know. All right, well, I think there's still a little more discussion on this concept of retention pond and sand filter, but I wanted to get Erin's input right now.
A question on what we were just talking about. When the outlet control structure in that basin, does it then discharge to a pipe that's around 100 feet long? Is that right?
Yeah, well, that's basically this 115-foot pipe. So that comes out of the, again, if you look at the cross-section view on SP 10, you have the outlet control structure here and then the discharge pipe comes out and then we break out at a consistent rate of about 115 feet away.
And the reason that can't daylight all the way from, you know, the basin all the way down is, I mean, we tend not to like pipes, so we can't, it's physically impossible for it to daylight.
I can't, I can't take it to the swell, that's not, that's not our property.
I don't think that's what she's asking.
No, 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 no. And the outlet control structure...
Right.
Wants daylight at the outlet structure?
Where it comes out.
You can't, we're down, we're down approximately eight feet in elevation.
That's the answer.
Do pipes, eight feet in there?
No, no, I understand, I understand. I just said, you don't like pipes.
We have to excavate the swell.
Oh, it's too deep.
Any other questions?
Oh, yeah, yes. Several, but we haven't talked about erosion control and what the proposed erosion control, the temporary sediment control is a little different from what this commission's used to do. So I don't know, which one do you wanna run? We should through that.
That'll be tough.
You have anything else about?
I don't know, what else? What else have you got?
I don't know who wants to take it. It's about, question about how close you're creating a 50% grade slope on the east side, okay?
That would be the riprap slope.
Yeah, well, and the both, the fabric mat slope is 50% grades, two to one.
Right.
And then you have a 1.5 to one.
Right.
Which I guess you want it to be riprap or part of it, I don't know which is what. It comes down to, toward the end of your property on the east, it comes to the 20 feet of the water course on the north of your property, what I mean, this slope, this 50% slope comes to...
No, it's somewhere near 20 feet because, I mean, you've got, you've got a 20-foot sewer easement before we get up to the easement.
Right, it's 20, I'm sorry, 20 feet to your property line at that point. And then you have a 15-foot sewer easement at the bottom of this 50% slope. So you've got 50% grade slope.
Right, okay.
15-foot sewer easement and then your property line. Okay, so I was talking, Jeff, about this, your equipment's gonna have to use that sewer easement to get back and forth because it, right? You can't build all that stuff from the top.
Well, sure, well, yeah, because they'll, they'll be, they'll be doing their grading for, like, for the building and with the machines, there's no reason why they can't be forming this as it goes. So I mean, you'll have, basically, they'll come in, they'll do all the clearing with the trees, put up the silt fencing along the limits of construction and then start their digging activities to start raising and filling the site or cutting the site as appropriate.
Right, but I can't imagine that, that wouldn't be work down there on the sewer easement, which is fine, the water department says they'll let you run your equipment along these sewer easements. Not graded, but to run the equipment.
Yeah, again, I don't, I don't see any reason where we need to approach onto the sanitary sewers. If we have, if we have the silt fencing set up as the limits of construction, which is shown here, so if we have our silt fencing, we're not gonna have anything going on the other side of that silt fence.
Right, that's not, nothing, again, you get a 50% slope like that, that's what it's like. And then you got your silt fence right here. That's, we like a little more room, we don't want the silt fence right at the bottom.
I mean, construction, construction equipment can get in there and form that slope without an issue.
Okay, I was just suggesting, what I was gonna suggest is silt fencing or hay bales along the perimeter of your property at the bottom of that 50% slope, that's quite a cheap grade.
Which is, okay, yeah, because right now, we have, we have silt fencing. So again, if you're looking at, I mean, the other thing that we use quite a bit, too, are the fiber logs. If you're more comfortable with hay bales, I mean...
I don't, I don't think that's where she'd go, and she must have moved the silt fence over to the property line. But I don't think that's, I think this is a better design.
Well, actually, she wanted a double, she wanted another row of silt fencing.
For double protection.
For the equipment that will be moving back and forth, and you've got gardener, you've got erosion control blankets that have to be pinned in there, you've got plantings up and down that slope, there's gonna be a lot of activity on that slope.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing is that the easement, that sanitary sewer easement is, is pretty wooded. You know, they can get through it, but it's kinda like a narrow swath. So if you're gonna try to put something right along the property line, you're gonna, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to do more and more treater. I think with what we've got for the plan in through here, that this is really sufficient enough to prevent the sediments from...
Right, let's talk about where the wetlands actually touch the property line, or maybe it's one foot away. That's where you have it flagged? Can you show the commission where that is? That's at the, at the two to one slope? About the middle?
Yeah, well, I mean, the closest point to the wetland flag was down here, I guess that was flagged 152. So that's approximate to here. So, you know, it's like you said, you know, it's approximately two feet off the property line, give or take.
Right, and then you have your grading to what, 18 feet from that wetland?
Yeah, so it's further than that.
What would you say?
I'll tell you in one second.
My, where I'm going with this is protection of that wetland. You have a 50% slope coming down to 18, 20 feet from a wetland.
Yeah, from flag, we're about 25 feet away from flag 152.
Well, yeah, I'm talking about 153, which is a little closer, but yeah.
It's the same, it's the same distance because it's parallel.
I don't know, I just wanna see more protection for that wetland. I'll pass around a photograph of this site. This is, when we're talking about these wetlands, they're in a wooded, ravine type of situation. This drainage area that was built, I mean, was created when they built I-91. When was that, the 60s? Anyway, it's grown out.
You know, I don't wanna belabor the point. If the commission feels that coming in through this area, we need to fortify that a little bit better, I mean, we're certainly amenable to that because again, the last thing we wanna see is, is get into a position where we've got sediment leaving the site. So if we need to go with a double row of silt fencing in there or back it up with hay bales, I mean, we're fine with that.
I think once you do your 50 foot, 50% slope, you're not gonna be playing on it. You're gonna get kind of over with it, it's gonna go away. You're not gonna have somebody out there with a bozo that's dancing around or escorting. Once that's...
No, because they're, they're gonna form the slope up and they'll get, it'll probably be high-graisted to get the vegetation on it. This shaded area, which doesn't, it's not too dark, it may be hard for you guys to pick up on it. Then we get back into the riprap in here, there's no vegetation, you can focus on that. So again, once that slope is formed up and the riprap is placed on the slope, it's stable.
I don't have anything else?
But there's no riprap for this portion of the slope.
Right.
Riprap is in the north portion.
Right, so again, we have, we have no issue with putting extra fortification in there. If you want a double row of silt fencing in there or some additional hay bales, we're fine with that.
I think that would be a good idea.
Well, one, I think that they're willing to do it, so I think they will do it. If it's fast, they'll be asked to do it. But a 50% slope, it isn't enough, how much, what's the length of the slope? Is it, is it 100 feet, 50 feet?
Well, it's, well, it's basically, I mean, we're two to one slope all the way around the perimeter, so this, this extensive area in here, right? Well, we're, we're at the one and a half to one, we're, we're about...
I think you're going the wrong way. Run, just run of the slope.
Oh, 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 the width, okay. Yeah, the width up here, we're probably 36 feet plus or minus and we're...
It's not like it's 200 feet of 50% slope.
No, and that's...
If you can keep the water on your side of the peak of the slope or the top of the slope, you're not gonna get much flow in 36 feet.
No, and what's gonna happen, because once they, once they have a little upgrade established, this becomes a berm up on, up on top. So any of the, any of the runoff is taking place in here prior to the final placement system is not gonna be coming down the slope anyway, it's gonna get directed to the other stormwater management features. So again, the amount of runoff that you're really gonna be able to get out here is trivial.
Well, I'm more concerned during construction, the construction phase. And in your construction sequence, in your plan, you have the stumping occurring before any silt fencing is put down. So because of the sensitivity of the water course being 20 feet away and the wetlands being 20 feet away, I personally would like some protection along that property line before you stump this slope because this grade now is what, 30% grade today with that forest that's going in there, so that you're gonna be stumping, cutting and then stumping. So we have it put down before in your sequence. Okay. Just on the property line I'm talking about, on the eastern property.
Well, when you say the property line, let me just hold you up a minute. Do you mean the property line or the tree cutting line? Because I think you're better off on the tree cutting line. Let them take out the row of trees and then put the silt fence up against the tree line.
I'm not so clear where that tree line is. Did you show it on anything?
Well, the, the tree line, I mean, yeah, the tree line is shown on here. Basically, once we get outside of the sand trees, it's, it's tree all the way up.
Right, double measures.
Right, so you have, you have 10 feet of trees before you get to your construction site?
To remove?
Well, again, if you look at, if you look at where the tree line is up and through here, the tree line is already past the easement.
So you're gonna remove, all the trees?
Within the graded areas.
You are gonna remove all the trees?
Yeah.
And when you get to the sanitary easement line, is that clean cut?
Well, we're not proposing any...
No, no, I'm just asking, is it clean cut?
It's drivable, but there, but there is woody vegetation in it.
Okay, so that's where the silt fence should go rather than clear-cut the sewer line and get it all the way over to the property line. I mean, something along that.
For the, before they stump, you say?
Well, before the stomper or if they start stomping right in that lower area first so you can get the silt fencing.
Wouldn't it make sense to do a double fence and hay bales on the construction area, the disturbed area of the construction site? That way, it's gonna keep everybody out of it.
Oh, yeah, I just didn't wanna see stumping on a grade nick. It's like this today, I don't know, 35% grade today, so when they start stumping, it rains, that's gonna come down the hill, that's all I'm saying.
But I'm sure if they're gonna start, if they start today by stumping, they're gonna stump it, grade it, get it seeded, aggraceded and get it safe. You know, they're not gonna, once it's done, it's gonna be done, it's over with, they're not gonna be re-disturbing that area.
No, no, it might take, what, two, three weeks to get it all nice?
You know, you know, you're talking about stumping, they gotta, I think there's an area between removal of trees and stumping the slumps that things can be done. Need the hay bales and the silt fence before it's stumped, X, Y, Z.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's all workable.
That's right, but that's where the, I don't wanna say confusion is getting, but the stumping is near the last of that project or phase of the project. What else you got?
Well, if, if the commission is predisposed to act on this tonight, I wasn't ready to, but we can add all my, all the missing items, we can add on as conditions of approval. But before we get to that, if they wanna talk about their non-traditional erosion control, sediment traps, we can talk about, we should talk.
And again, for the record, Jeff Gordon, I would call it non-traditional. We've been dealing with New York State Seeker requirements, Grinch requirements, this is basically what we're doing nowadays. And what we're trying to do is work with the grade, you have to work with the property as best you can. We are putting in a 12-inch-high earth berm along that top of that hill slope as was indicated to prevent the water from sheet flow across it. We're also going to be adding an additional berm. I did send that out to Erin to pick up this created swale here to intercept this water and to get it into our sediment basin. I have a very large sediment trap here on the lower part of the site that we're, has an initial one. Then I have secondary and tertiary ones that are formed by using gabions. You're probably familiar with gabian baskets, they're wire baskets and they're filled with large trap rock. And they create like little check dams in a swale and that, with a little filter fabric behind it creates forbays or additional sediment basins. And then near the end of the project, we break those baskets apart and that becomes part of my riprap outlet. I still have, the stone's already there already, I don't have to haul it out and disturb more, I repurpose it as part of my outlet control. So the details kinda speak to that. We have hay bale check dams that do the same thing on the swale on the western portion. And then we have the two to four-foot-high gabian check dam forbayed sediment basins that are highlighted on the bottom there. Kinda see it illustrated here on page SP 11. Again, if I put this across the swale, I'm creating little ponds that are gonna catch the sediments. And then I either, if it's a lot of sediments, we have to remove it during the course of construction. If it's not much sediment at the end, I just break those baskets apart, remove the wire and utilize that stone as part of my riprap outlet.
Again, let me, let me point out to you, in soil conditions in that general area, with very high in sediments in the top foot of layer, and a lot of sediments, we had a lot of issues with the early development in that area with sediments, so I warned you of that.
So you had basically a crested layer and then...
A foot of layer of this heavy clay-type soils that was flowing, causing problems in all the sediment structures.
Well, we'll be going through that as you indicate. So that, these are key features of the SME, the earthen berm, the diversions into the sediment basins, the forbayed check dam methodology as well. Hydraceding denuded slopes and we also have, on some of the intermittent slopes, we have filter fabric, we have blankets put into them to stabilize them with landscaping.
What else?
Uh, well, should we, or...
Well, I mean, you, you are coming up with this list of conditions, which they should, they got a copy of?
Well, I, I thought we tabled it tonight, but if you go on the table, then I was gonna suggest that my, you can look at my environmental planning report that went out last Friday and in there it has, oh, I don't know, 13 things I wanted to see on the plan, page, bottom of page four and top of page five. And then tonight I wrote down a few more.
When did they get this, Erin?
Friday, well, it went out Friday.
Last Friday?
Yeah, it went out your package Friday.
When did they get it? When did the applicant receive it?
Well, frankly, I faxed it on Friday, but I guess his fax machine didn't get it, wouldn't receive it, I don't know what happened to that, so by my...
You got one anymore?
Yeah.
Got a chance to review it?
Yeah, again, for the record, Jeff Gordon, there's nothing here that's not normally added or included in the project. Maybe there's certain things that we had submitted that Erin didn't really, didn't catch. We had the responsible parties, we had a separate operations and maintenance plan submitted with a drainage report. She asked me to send her a separate one, so we did that too because it was part of a 200-page report, it's easy to get lost in that volume of information, so I sent a separate one there.
I got it in email, yes. Like, get that email put in the report, that'd be great, yeah.
Excuse me, what, this is your environmental planning report of the 12.
Yes, bottom, bottom page four.
Bottom of the four item.
Yep, and then it goes on to page five.
Five, number five item.
Yeah, but then there's a whole bunch of bullet points.
I don't see 13.
No, no, all the, you're right, it's number five has, I don't know, eight, nine things that I'd like to revise site plan to protect. One Jeff mentioned tonight, he added earth curbing on west side, you know, these are things... You know, these are things we've been talking about over the last few weeks, I guess. Tonight I handed out the sand filter redesign from, to please the water division. I pass it out tonight. In your packet, you got the earthen berm that he handed in last week. And there's a bunch of little things. I'm suggesting placards.
Where are you going to put the placards?
At the edge of the property.
On the sewer line?
Someplace.
I, I, it's not a big issue. I know they'll do it, but I think it's a waste of placards in that area.
All right, and the, on the detail sheet, there's a fiber log model. This is a question, Jeff. I don't know where that is on the site. Maybe it was just thrown in the detail sheet.
Well, I will say that I add that on there because there's a general note on the S and E measures that gives both of us authority to direct in the field if we want additional measures added. So when I have that detail on there, I can tell them, I want some fiber waddles there because they have the detail already. They're good because they can be moved around. We put them here, when we're working here, then we take them and we move them elsewhere. Hay bales, you can't do that.
Now, Eric, I dislike this program. I wish you had these all resolved before tonight. Okay? Because it's going on to these meetings and getting involved in all these items. But you're agreeing to all these items.
I think most of them are there and what's not there will be.
You're agreeing to all these items. So a condition of approval is environmental planners' report dated the 12th, one through five.
Mr. Chairman, I have one comment on that and one concern is the reference to a drainage easement from the state. The property's been draining to the state.
Then tell me what you don't want on it.
I don't want that on there.
No, okay.
It's under number five, it's bullet point number four.
Drainage right to drain from stormwater on state property?
Correct. We don't have any problem asking the state, but I can't guarantee that the state, you know, give us a form of argument.
Well, you're already draining to that.
Correct, that's correct.
You're only about a year behind on their approvals, two or three.
The DLT guy just retired, so there's nobody up there right now.
Okay, now, what about number one, revised sand filter facility requested by the water division? Is that going on this condition or is it going on that planning and zoning condition?
That can be on your condition because we've been working with Mr. Krueger on that and we think that we have satisfied what he wants in this latest iteration.
Okay, but unfortunately, this is a derived sand filter facility, but it doesn't say approved, requested by the water division. It really should say approved by the water division.
We're fine with that. But he said, most of the other items are on here. The only other, you know, the placards, I think I agree with Chairman on that.
Yeah, I'm going to take the placards.
And the other thing, number three, permission to be obtained from owner of 100 miles drive from the soil and maintain catch basin protection on this property. We are putting in silt sacks in the catch basins in the road there. We have an easement, so I don't know that we need any special permission to put silt sacks in the catch basins in the accessway. It's not going to be their drainage, somebody going to protect it.
Yeah, you're right. What else?
I don't know that we need to relocate flagging in the field.
I couldn't find any flagging.
But there's no flagging on their property, needed.
Well, it helps me to locate myself where I am and.
Well, what kind of flagging? You're looking for wetland flag, right?
Apparently it was done. There's four wetland flags on the site plan and it's just.
But the problem is they're on somebody else's property. Right?
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct?
I often use them during the construction for orientation purpose.
Do they get permission to flag somebody else's property?
I don't know how the soil sign is flagged. He flagged it, apparently. He told me he did.
Well, then they're there, so.
Again, I mean, with respect to that, Bob Wookley, I'm not sure if you really need the flags, although you have the sand filter sore easement for roughness.
Number one's gone.
If you've got the manholes and you have the whole easement to use that as a reference for.
Okay, identifying flag location for post-drainage discharge group area in the field. That shouldn't be a problem.
No, it's readily doable.
Yeah. Mainest plan you got, add names, that's a pretty standard issue, contact people. Because we find that any of these projects, no matter how simple they are or how complicated they are, their success or failures depends on the contractor doing the job.
You're right.
It's that simple. And the cheapest bid isn't always the one that the contractor, the owner comes out cheapest on. So it's a problem, so that's the issue.
Well, out of what she wants, it becomes a construction sequence, right? I mean, like staking out the catch basins in the storm, the sand filter and all, but that comes down the road. And you've got cropping to do and a lot of work before that, so sooner or later it's going to be done. Just you're agreeing to do it. There's no sense doing it twice because too many times we've seen with it, we request them and they stake it out and then the contractor comes through and when he takes the trees out, he takes everything out.
Right now the site is, the accessibility on that site is very, very limited. Once a lot of the tree clearing gets done, you'll have ample opportunity to find a lot of things that are there.
Okay, under number five, silt fence, you're volunteering to double fence and hay bales along that.
In that wetland area adjacent.
I don't know how you want to describe it, but that area.
I would describe it in the area by the wetland flagging and that way.
153, 154.
I'd also like it where the river comes 20 feet to the property.
That's 153 and 154.
No, no, off north, the actual river, the actual stream comes 20 feet from the property line.
There's that, Karen.
Are you talking about right over here, Aaron?
Yeah. Right, and it's proposed, I wanted to, one to one slope there.
Why don't you put double hay bales all along that eastern boundary?
Okay.
Double hay, not double hay, double silt fence, hay bale four.
Yes, sir.
And that shouldn't be a problem.
Is there, do you want anything done before stumping or no erosion control?
Well, I think that this, definitely, what are we doing before stumping?
There's a lot that's self-contained already.
I think, well, go ahead and say anything.
No, go ahead, I'm just asking.
Well, I think you've got a silt fence before you cut the trees. But we're also looking at that area between the, that's right along the sewer line.
Yeah, usually we do the silt fencing after the trees are down, before the stumping because the trees will come down and destroy all the silt fencing.
Well, you got, you got, here's your contractor. If any old equipment contractor's using on the trees, you could have yourself a river going down to the wetland. If he runs parallel to 91, he shouldn't have a problem. If he runs perpendicular, you got a river running right down to it.
Understood.
Depends what time of year. If you did it this spring, you'd have a river. If you did it last week, you'd be okay. So there's a lot of conditions that are field conditions. So that's going to be the silt fence, definitely double silt fence, hay bales before stumping.
Right, and the other item, asking us to put a retaining wall along that whole area is onerous.
Where was it, the retaining wall? I saw something on the retaining wall.
One, two, three, four, fifth bullet down, number five.
Is there any retaining wall now that you're going to propose? No, nothing? There wasn't a short one?
We redesigned our site. It's not very efficient.
There's no retaining wall?
Working with Mr. Baltramitis, we came up with the other stabilized slope solutions. The regulation allows that if it's something that's approved by the engineer public works for record, then that's acceptable. We spent time talking with them and we came up with that solution.
Okay, that one's out, then, so.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
And then the water committee comments dated July 15th that was handed out tonight?
Yeah, but that's number one, revised sand filter.
No, 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 he has about 87 comments, I think.
You know, he really can do that associated with planning and zoning. I mean, he'll be in there together with planning and zoning and everything else. They're going to deal with it, so.
So you don't want to include his comments?
I don't think we need, I think we got a sand filter in there and the rest of his comments can be associated with planning and zoning.
Do the gabion baskets go in? What sequence for the construction?
That's early on when we're doing the, starting the grading because that ties in with the earthen berm to create the sediment traps, this temporary sediment basin. So that's fairly early on when you're sort of removing dirt around.
And the earthen berms are removed at the end of the project or?
Well, yeah, the earthen berms have to come out. The earthen berms are basically like building a earthen curve before you actually build the parking lot. So that intercepts sheet flow and runs it into those sediment basins.
Question, on this discharge of your retention area, you've got to throw a single-point discharge pipe. And it's flared in into a riprap swale and I don't know, you're widening the swale as it goes down. What would be the impact to a structural level spreader in that area?
It's a funny thing, we're doing a hotel in another town where we had a level spreader and having us convert it to one of these discharges.
And their reason being?
Well, on this site, it's primarily because of the grade that you have coming down through there. I mean, the slopes are fairly steep to come up from the discharge point. So when you get down to the bottom, coming across the sore easement, we are pretty flat because that's basically drivable right now. So again, we could take as part of that design, what we could probably do, and again, I'll go over this with Eric, because again, he would have to be amenable to widening out the amount of chain block that we put, put in there, or cable block. So it would be conceivable that just as we get, as we approach the sand or easement, that when we end the riprap channel proper, when we transition from a riprap channel to a level spreader, we could take and widen that out. So like right now, if, say if that riprap channel is three feet wide, we could take and widen that out to whatever the design criteria or what the calculations would tell us to go out to.
Okay, but that level spreader is the riprap level spreader.
Well, it's going to be concrete.
Well, the level spread is going to be concrete?
It'll be concrete because of what Eric's looking for, protectors.
Well, is your level spread a chain, concrete cable? That's your level spread?
That's like a matting, yeah.
Yeah, I know the material.
Yeah.
But that's your level spread?
That would be the level spread, correct.
All right.
So again, from the point of view that if we took that channel and put the channel all the way down to the property line, you would have three-foot wide.
Yeah, which.
Pointed.
Yeah.
If we widen that out, we can get that up to 12, probably 14 feet, as long as Eric is okay with 14-foot width in this sore easement. I think even right now, if you take a look at the details, we did transition going from that three-foot wide trench, and I think this is probably out right now about six or seven feet if you look at the detail.
Okay.
So we could certainly take that out, wire it, go with.
You can deal with him, that sounds good. I didn't realize that the concrete blocking was your level spread concept.
Yeah.
I thought it was just for travel on. Okay, Aaron?
Yeah.
All right, what about a bond? $50,000? I don't know. What's the bonus bond? Don't give me five, I don't even know where. $25,000.
What form?
Pardon me?
What form do you take your bonds in?
Oh, letter, credit, chury, or cash.
Any questions, stand yourself. Cash, no.
Bullion, he's a big, the blues.
Okay. Any other questions, commissioners? All I can say is it's a four-acre site, I'm certainly doubt this project, larger than four acres. Larger than four acres. It's a full site, activity going on a lot, on all of it. But I have, I don't know, I can't think of anything that I could suggest to make it full proof or make it. Or else I won't accept. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion regarding the significant activity of this application.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, application A19-6.2, four miles drive, hotel development be deemed to be not a significant activity.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and I'll call for a vote. Rod?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny this application.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, the application A19-6.2, four miles drive, hotel development be approved, subject to the conditions set forth in the environment. Environment. Application reported, July 12th, paragraphs one through five, as amended by discussions here at this meeting.
Okay, you have the amendments?
We do, yes, Mr. Chairman, I guess.
Okay. Yes, Eric?
Excuse me, did you say paragraph one through five?
No, is this paragraph one through five or?
No.
Oh.
Items, items one through five.
Items, okay. Okay, items one through five on page four.
And page four and five.
Okay, as modified during the discussions of this meeting.
Okay, motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second.
I'd like to condition, meaning, I'd like to spell out the changes because we have eleven changes, like the bond, we have to talk about the bond.
Well, that's what we just talked about.
We just talked about these things, but I don't, I mean.
It was all the discussion tonight.
I don't have, I don't have all those eleven items written down. If you had those written down.
I don't write them down.
What's that?
I did write them down.
They're all down, we had just eliminated the ones that we didn't want. And a lot.
I'm saying, well, the minutes are tight up, I wanted to show that through the bond and that.
I got that, I got it.
Okay, so.
So the discussion is, so you have.
Yeah, I got it, well, but my question was, are you doing the earth curving on the west side? That's out, all right.
That one's out.
Okay. And the bond, and do we need a separate motion on the bond?
No, the bond's in as a condition.
Okay, okay, good.
I need one.
In that case, the motion is, my motion is complete.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Call for a vote. Rod?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you for taking the bond back tonight, appreciate it, thank you.
Very good. We need our full town.
Yeah. Don't call me about it, don't call me about it.
Okay.
Now, can I call?
All right. Good luck. Now, we're going on to, under new business, there's no real items under new business, but under receipt of new applications, there's an application A19-7.1, 3500 Road, New Tor Steel, Connecticut King. They're requesting an administration approval. Aaron and I went over what we're trying to do, what they're doing, and I'll give you a quick synopsis that they are installing a vessel, tank or a structure that's going to be able to control slag, waste slag coming off of the manufacturing process. But in so building the facility, they're going to hit groundwater and they're looking for a de-watering permit to get from us while they're under construction of this vessel, this tank, this retainer. So I told her I didn't see any reason not to give an administration approval. It's pumping, the water's going to be pumped out of the ground, go down a few hundred feet and go right backward, it's going to end up, begin with right back in the flood plain of that, so unless there's somebody, any problems with that, I'll okay the administration approval for that project.
Okay.
All right, application 19-7.2, 53 North Plains Industrial Road, Joe and Rubino. This is an after the fact project. You want to still say a little bit on this, Aaron?
Uh.
Because this is something, I read this was a few years ago, just.
This is interesting. I don't know when the original facility was built, but in 1996, they doubled the size of the building and the parking area without getting wetland permits. without getting well permits and without getting planning building permits and without getting any building permits, as it turns out. And so, and it's sizable. No one really knows how this happened. But anyway, they somehow it came to light, and now they're applying, and they want to get into performance. So they want to get everything straight and get all the proper permits right to act.
What kind of building is this, you said? What kind of building, what kind of structure, what is it?
I don't know what kind of structure. It's an house.
It's a top-end structures building. In fact, they used to make gold teeth in there or all kinds of expensive teeth in that area. And they're down on North Plains. They're about across from, you know, Curie, Adis, right there, Gordon, Pentron. I think the building was large and it got broken up into some different sizes, but I assume it's pre-engineered steel, but it's definitely a premium-looking building. So you're just saying, Aaron, that they need a well-in permit just to get in?
The reason they need one is to satisfy the surface area provision, which in, actually, ninety-six, that provision looked a little different. You know, we tweaked it over the years, but they need some kind of surface area.
Well, I mean, they're not doing any additional activity there.
Well, they are, but only to make planning zone happy regarding giving more open area for storage and keeping the parking because it's not.
Okay, here's my point. Does this want to be given an administration approval?
They use dry wells. They don't, they discharge their water to dry wells. They don't have a basin or anything, so maybe one could do that.
I think that this is a prime candidate for administration approval, only because there's going to be no changes. Interesting with dry wells, they don't even need a well-in permit for dry wells. They don't even need a well-in permit if they got.
No, they just need for the surface area creation.
I don't think so. It's not discharging into a well-in.
Oh, I see what you mean. I see what you mean.
See, they don't really need a, we've already been this with B K.
Yeah.
B L K, what's that now? B K E. We've had this a couple times already. There's no discharge to a well-in.
Well, I'm not a hundred percent sure they have discharge to the street. I don't.
They got dry wells, I think. But anyway, let's, I suggest giving it an administration approval. Is there any reason not to?
Is that an aquifer protected area?
That's a good question.
Well, the way I hear it going, upgrade by this would need to meet current zoning and coating. So if our current coating in that area is aquifer protected, then it needs to have some type of water oil separator system. Something to do with.
Okay, but across the street, was it current benefits, is it?
Curiati.
Curiati, it wasn't.
Being on that's on the riverside, it may be, it's in the, I'm not sure what the line is for that. But yeah, I have no problem with administration approval as long as we're not stepping out of bounds here as far as to meet current coating, what catch basins need to have.
Well, they've always planned it, so, I mean, they'll make them put in the proper catch basins and such. Is that what you mean? Yeah.
All right. At this point, you'll give an administration approval. If it blows up in our face, we'll deal with it at that time. The rest is fifty-six News Garden, using their D E P. Water treatment is not an issue. Violations, we're having more of those in applications. East Century, you talked briefly, Aaron, what was the final outcome on East Century?
Well, I filed a plan to report one out in Thursday's pocket. Basically, David Lord contacted me and he said, okay, let's go, let's have pre-construction meeting. And I said, wait a minute, you didn't go to planning zoning yet. They haven't, I was surprised. They still haven't planned zoning. So I thought this was going to all happen very quickly. So I said, don't you want to wait for your construction until you get your planning zoning permit? And then he got confused, so he goes, but don't you want us to remediate? Anyway, long story short, in order to, in order to go forward, they've got to post their bond. I told you of that. They've got to straighten out to make sure the contractor knows he can't do anything that planning zoning requires but approval for, but he can certainly go ahead and start the remediation part of that. So now that we've got that straightened out, they are very happy to proceed with the remediation. It looks just the same as the last time the commission was out there. They haven't done anything.
Okay, so at this point, the violation stays in effect?
Yes, I'd like you to say that.
Okay, the violation stays in effect. And, but they can do the remediation that was requested without a planning and zoning application.
Well.
But they do need a bond.
Okay, but I wouldn't phrase it that way.
Right.
I would say, but we encourage them to do the remediation part of the project.
Well, they, okay, encourage them or allow them without anything, without planning zoning. Okay, the next one is A-16's two point one, five thirty Church Street, Joe Minery. Okay. You said you were going out there this afternoon.
Yeah, but it was, you know, lightning thunder, so I didn't go. So he called me at four and he asked me to go. And I, what I actually said to him, I said, so you did, did you, there are four gullies that he has fixed. He said, yeah, we did it. I said, okay, well, you know, I'll go out tomorrow and see how weathered the storm. These gullies, my fears are going to get washed out. So maybe tonight, maybe we could hold off a little bit and see how these gullies withstand the next few storms. If it holds, when he put it in there, it holds.
The issue, the issue is he's been dragging his feet for a long time. Aaron went out with Rob Altermitas, and some of the major issues that were on the original plan seems to be under control, seems to be satisfied for Rob.
Rob doesn't want him to go and disturb that basin. The basin is way too steep on the south side, but Rob says, just, it's too late now, just, it's okay. It'll matter.
So it turns out to be these gullies, but if he keeps dragging his feet, we still have the ability to request the bond being pulled and get the job done. Okay. Fifty-two Hanover Street, that gentleman seems to be very cooperative with Aaron.
All the plans are planted.
And that's working well. Twelve Old Colony, Old Colony Road, this is true, but not true blue, true blue?
True blue.
True blue, right?
Yeah.
And they're, they all got a little overzealous, but they're working closely with Aaron to take everything under control.
Yeah, and I think they'll come through. It's just they honestly didn't know that they over, I got photos.
That's right.
Overbeaten.
They're working with you. You're one of the few violators that have been very cooperative.
Yeah, and they're going to have Ross go out and survey, establish where that top slope should be.
Okay. Twelve forty-five Old Colony Road in Quinipiac River, unpermitted fill. This is, is this Hensys? This one Hensys, twelve?
Burnums.
Burnum, Manny Burnum's old property.
Oh, yeah.
This gentleman was in last month, and he pulled some material back. And, but he was supposed to hire a surveyor, engineer, and get everything on black and white. Eleven oh three.
Oh, let me just report, he did call today, he did call today. He says the surveyor, they signed the contract, the surveyor's starting Friday. I actually did go out there yesterday and showed him where he should put the silt fence because he's. I will say, they've done a tremendous amount of clearing of old piles of old dant trees and so on. They did, and they cleared all the junk off the top. They still got a ways to go, but now it's starting to erode and travel. So I said, put some silt fencing up. I think he'll cooperate.
You have some major concerns on floodplain and flood lake.
I think there's a lot of filling the floodplain.
This is going on. Okay, eleven oh three Old Colony Road, this is a new one. This is on the corner where the old gas station was, right by the underpass.
They're here tonight.
Well, there's a lot of issues going on there. You just need name and address for the guy.
Go ahead. Abdul Nadim Khan.
Can you spell it, I'm sorry, it's funny.
Khan, K-H-A-N. And I mean, three Old Colony Road. What?
Got it.
Richard Salva, one twenty Bush Street, North.
Can you spell your last name?
Salva, S-A-L-V-A.
Okay.
All right. I guess, was it you, Mr. Chairman tipped me off this was going on? Or was it Nick? I can't remember. Somebody called me and said, this is going on out there. So I went out there and then issued the notice of violation the same day. That was June twenty-eighth. I've got pictures from that day. And then I went out there, gosh, yesterday, and took more pictures. They've been cooperative up to a point, got more work to do. What they, he's cleaning up the site. This is an old gas station, and he's, you know, doing the remediation for the gas tanks and all that stuff, working with the D E P and everything like that. So in part, cleaning up the site to make a nice site, he kind of over-clear. And it's easy to do, there's pavement. He assumed that pavement was his. Well, it's not. It belongs to the property to the west, to the west, which is eleven twenty-seven Old Colony Road. So he over-clear, went over that pavement, kept on going and pushed some debris into the pond and took down some trees and kind of ended up in the pond. On the other side, on the south side, by Connecticut, Hyprodermic, he did a little bit of over-clear and clearing back there, not as much as the other side. Anyway, so I went out there, explained everything to him. He had done, prepared an A-two survey for the state of Connecticut because they want him to build an island on Old Colony Road. So he had done that a year ago for the state of Connecticut. So we did have the A-two survey, so we can use that as a reference point. Recently, he has, at our request, he went out and had the surveyor put in some survey stakes. And I'd like to go out there with Commissioner Kern. He suggested we go out there next week and look where those survey stakes are and just see what else has to be removed or tidied up or whatever. He, the owner put in all sorts of silt fencing and put his straw mulch as it requested. We then had the owner of eleven twenty-seven come over. He happened to be home. He came over and saw what had been done to his property, which is about, oh, gosh, maybe twenty-five feet of pavement and another twenty-five feet of dirt, you know, sort of, whatever is that, fifty feet? And that's a concern, you know, that's a trespass. And I would like, you know, the whole commission can go out there, but to give their opinion, but maybe Commissioner Kern can help me decide what should be done. You know, should bushes and trees be put back? Or should it just be tidied up, grass or whatever?
Well, commissioners, you can drive by and see the bulk of the whole thing. It's very close to the road. But Nick can go and talk to Aaron on it. But it's really got to come back to where it was at some time. And it just can't come back to the property line. It's got to come back to where it was. So if you filled ten feet of your property line, you've got to pull it back that ten feet. That's the question in trying to determine where the fill was before it started to get started to get pushed around. You're probably going to have to pull some aerial photos on some dates and see.
Okay, but I think they just on your.
Yeah, there was not much fill added. It was just leveled out because there was a big tree that had fallen and some other trees that were.
What is falling?
The big tree was on the property, but the old tree, I think, they had to push that in that way. And it all had to be played out, and he got downstairs to put it all in, maul it all out. And he was supposed to basically pull out all the garbage. It was like a cot hooker refrigerator, a lot of tires and stuff that were in the area. So, you know, we're at the assumption that was his property, of those property. So we were trying to clean it, clean it up a little bit. I guess, I guess, come find out it wasn't his, right?
Seventy-five to eighty years of collection there.
Yeah, you believe the times.
We did comply very much, actually. We were trying to do, if I put it this way, face lick of my property. People can drive, so they can see really nice property and everything. Because of this pavement, pavement is all over, so that the pavement is there, so this is the part of the property. But actually, we clean up nice to his property. His property we clean up nice, but when I find out that the state said, you cannot do that, that there was no any, what you call it?
Yeah, the surveyor did the A-two survey for the plumbing transportation there right away. So there wasn't no markings as far as what was decided in rare property boundaries. We assumed that it was wood, the fence and the wooden, wood in area in behind. And the end of the pavement was, you know, was part of the previous gas stations. So we assumed that one feet of pavement was on the build's property, when actually it wasn't.
The property's got quite a history. One of the owners lived there. That's where they lived in the back of the property. But you're going back like seventy-five years. But cleaning the property up makes it look pretty from the top, but it has a problem associated with weapons. Like you're finding out now.
We cleared it up and we did.
So we get it straighted out.
One thing I'm confused about, and maybe Nick, you might be more familiar, and you can tell me when you're out there, is how that pond, if it did drain towards the south and out to south, out to Main Street, did it drain that way?
It went down the side between the two properties.
Okay, good.
And that was one of my questions for you, is what part does the state play in this? Because that's a retention pond for the state stormwater that comes down from a bunch of different areas and goes under the road and goes into this pond. And I wasn't aware that Mr. Sweet owned it.
Yeah, he owns it.
He owns it.
I don't.
Does the state have an easement to dump their?
I find out because I don't see any on maps, any kind of easement. Doesn't mean they own that one.
This gentleman just purchased the property. He had to have an A-two survey done when he walked the property.
That's when we found out how much the state owned. You know, like he actually has the lease property from the state to obtain the parking in the area next to the pond to get caught by.
I have, just to rent this small piece, I always spend like thousands of dollars. And then I could be everyone.
Fifty dollars a month for the.
Seventy-five.
Oh, I got fifty.
Part of that parking lot, which is.
I'm going to fight for twenty-five dollars.
Part of that parking lot, which is on the neighbor's property, we're curving and putting topsoil in because we're not leasing that part of the property from the state. So we have to curving and topsoil.
And that property, this small property, is not used for anything. I could have used it for myself, but they don't want me.
What happened to the brook, the brook still there and it ran out?
There's no brook.
What did you use, green scheduled thirty-five or forty-pipe you have? Do you have a pile of greens, eight-inch or ten-inch pipe that was sitting on the site? Where did that go?
That was, I don't know, that was.
Where did it dig behind the garage between Connecticut and Dermans and your garage? There was some digging activity going on, and you had five or six boats of material brought in. Where did that material go?
That would be under the building.
That's right. I just said behind the building.
Yeah.
First of all, where did the pipe go? Did you try to pipe the brook that comes out of that line?
There wasn't a brook in the front of the pipe. It either had storm drain in the parking lot, but it can't be there.
You can't tell me it was a brook because when we called D E P because of the snow when they removed the tanks, you dumped the wastewater from the tank removal into that brook. It came down across the front of my property in Connecticut, Hyprodermic. It had a real strong smell. It was on a Friday night, right? It seemed like everything that happened over here is on Saturdays and Sundays. But don't tell me it wasn't the load to fill because I stopped right at the stop sign. Tell me the loads to fill that were there. It was either processed storm or crushed storm.
Hold on, can I have one second? Which one you starting with?
You started behind the building, there's a brook like running behind the garage between, okay, hot damage in that property. There's a brook there, but that only goes to like behind the garage, you stop. And then it's pretty much level and fancy, all the bushes there.
Where did the brook go?
I don't know. This is the way we purchased, and this is the way, we did not touch anything in that area. We did not touch the brook or the screen.
Doesn't sun that way?
Well, I can tell you what kind of back hole was, and I can tell you when it was sun. It was on a Sunday, and it was a case four-wheel drive back what I did because I went by here going. there going to another establishment, and I saw the activity going on on the Sunday.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, it was back in the back of, I guess he had removed all that topsoil from the back building because of where it was all his money. And they got all the topsoil, like what's over there, like where? And it was all that, but we didn't curb it on the, on the break there, they did it in the break there.
The ditch, it looks more like ditch, but it's there.
The break is there. I don't, but I hope that Friday night...
I think they don't think of it as broke.
Well, I don't know. Let's meet out there and go over what needs to be done. And all I'm asking for is to get it pulled back to where it originally was, originally was, not what the guy before him did or, you know, do we need to get the stick about this to find out what the size of that retention pond was? Because they're putting their stormwater into that pond. And when that pond fills up, where's it going to go? He built the back of his property up now, so the only place that water can go is between Connecticut Hypodermic and May. So I got enough problems with water back there now. I don't need any more.
Oh, so basically, that is your property?
No, Connecticut Hypodermic property. He came over and introduced himself to somebody over there, and then he asked him, "Was none of this, none of his business what you were doing?" Instead of working with your neighbor, they gave him a hard time. So I don't know who that was.
But are you only for talking for behalf of his side or you're talking to me?
No, I'm talking for the break that was between the two buildings, what happened to the break.
But you're angry, actually?
Yeah, why am I angry?
Are you angry?
No, I'm not angry. No, because of...
Everybody's listening, everybody sees you.
Why is the lady's room about angry? I'm always angry.
No, you have to calm down and talk to me. I did not do anything if he's telling you that I was doing it or we were doing it anything bad.
Right, so Aaron and I are going to come out there and...
Please do that.
We are, we're going to come out there and...
But you have to calm down. If you show me your anger here, it's not right. It's not right.
Hold on, be careful. Okay, we're not going to go out and book, but...
We're willing to comply or whatever.
We are compliant, leave it. Miss Aaron is right here with the heart of my heart. It's my property, and I really want compliance. I'm very, very... I'm not issuing anything wrong.
This is his property, right? He's seen it here. The string goes right here.
Well, we'll see you next month, after the meeting. Now...
Okay, so what day do you think you'll be out? What day do you think you'll be out so someone will be there to meet you?
We don't get anybody there.
Oh, yeah?
No, she's coming as a town official, I'm coming as a commissioner.
Oh, okay. I'll leave you to come look, see you next meeting.
I'm only asking you questions about the, where those six wells to fill went that were parked before.
Right, right behind the building.
Yeah, where did those go? And I noticed you were doing some digging there. Were you digging down in front to get the muck out, put the stone in there to harden it up? Because the elevation back there now seems to be quite higher than it was originally.
No, it's staying in elevation.
Okay. The trees that you took down are falling down. You took the suns out.
There was one tree between the building and the garage, it was wood in there.
All right, what about the stuff by the road?
Up by the road, that was a big tree that had fallen.
Right. So did you take the sun out for that or that still there?
Uh, the dumpster, yeah, I don't know if they took it out.
Not my property. We did not broke that.
They cleared up all that wood and took a dumpster load of debris out.
It's happened just because of the weather and the big creek.
Yeah, exactly.
On his property, not his.
Four months ago.
So we cleaned up for him, actually.
Right down the driveway edge, you know, which we thought it was our property.
So you're, you're willing to restore Connecticut Hypodermic property that you disturbed, take away the, the stuff that you pushed up on the property line? You're willing to...
Yeah, we didn't disturb, I mean, they, they, there were pins and stuff, all the work on the property borderline, you can see where the Juliano marked it with, with stakes, and none of the work is...
All right, so Juliano's supposed to have been out there stake property?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so then you do have a print of where your property, your forecourt is at?
Yeah. And they came out and they marked them two property lines, so you see when you come out there. I believe the driveway, there's two dots on the driveway and on the pavement, and then the back row is stakes.
Yeah. I follow the graphs of the stakes.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, you don't need, you don't need to...
I would be really appreciate if you can come and, if I'm willing, you know, I can really, I'll give you a, have to, you know, find out anything you want, anything if I can ask them to do.
Okay. All right, then keep everybody posted, everybody online, everybody on target. Okay, for the record, all the violations, one through six, will remain as violations on this agenda. Any comments regarding that? Okay, very good. Do you have some questions?
No, we're just wanting to be quick. Okay, all right, all right. All right, gentlemen.
Very good.
We'll, we'll see, we'll connect ones, and we'll see what we've said around me this show. Like you said, we're willing to do whatever needs to be necessary, you know?
That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
Please. Is there a second?
Sir.
All in favor?
I think so.
We really want to say goodbye to Cindy.
Cindy.
Cindy, you wish you had Cindy.